Are you ready?
Um, Ms. Bevan.
We're having issues. We're not going to have audio, we're not going to have video, but we'll have audio on YouTube.
Okay.
So, yes, we're ready.
Camera is not working, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Camera's not working, but the audio is.
Amazing, okay. All right. Good afternoon, not evening. Welcome to the City Council Workshop Meeting of January 27th, 2025 at 2:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Present is Mayor Sarah Countryman, Councilwoman Cheryl Fox, and Councilman Stan Donaldson. With that, it is 2:01, and I'd like for you to please stand and take a pledge of allegiance with us.
The American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. We have no one signed up to speak at the public forum. And we did have two sign up, they will speak on the agenda item. All right, workshop agenda. All workshop items on the agenda are for discussion only, no action will be taken. Item number three on your agenda, presentation by BCS Capital on their proposed development on a 32-acre parcel of land located south of the C.B. Stewart Drive and Buffalo Springs Drive intersections and north of Eva Street. With that, Mr. LaFebvre, if you would go to the podium and you may speak on this item and kind of set the table for us, that would be great.
Thank you for letting me speak. James is here, they'll speak for themselves. I just wanted to take the liberty of going over some of the past history of the property and of the properties in that area generally. Hillary will be here shortly, and we'll give you a copy of the original land plan. When we first started all our activities in Montgomery, we went through many meetings with City Council, and we basically came up with an overall concept of what they call new urbanism and... I always lose the word, but essentially zoning where you can have residential and commercial cumulative, but you can't have commercial and residential. So residential areas are protected, but if you have a business area ideally designed, people can actually live and work in the same area and walk to restaurants and have a walk-in city. So that was the original concept, and the city actually hired... Designed roads, and we designed potential uses. Nothing's exact in this world, but these were essential, essentially... Have they got one?
Sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Essentially, okay, if anyone else has questions, we'd be happy to show them. But essentially, this was our overall idea. It wasn't written in stone, you could move bubbles around, but the concept was an overall master plan. And you can see, Hillary's holding it up, but you can see the first, the difficulty of something like this is you can't sell one piece of land just for a pad site, because if you do, it's like making the wrong mark on a blank piece of paper, you've ruined the whole thing. So we've had to be extremely careful about how things develop and how quickly they develop. And in fact, most of the businesses that are up and down 105 have originally come to us, and we've said, no, you know, we'd like to see you, but not on our property, because our properties need to be centrally planned. And that takes very specific developers. And so far, the first developer was Milestone, and I didn't agree with everything they did, but overall, in the end, the city has the final word, and they approved things we wouldn't approve of, but they did put in Gardner Drive, which was one of our requirements, and they generally held to a plan that was very similar to the one that the city approved. Because the city approved all these areas that we're discussing as mixed use. And so they approved that, and you have as a result, there were some drainage problems, which is a separate discussion, but you have Kroger, you had Home Depot. When we were talking to Home Depot, we were required then to do a tree study. City Council overrode that and let them knock all the trees down, but that's how things go. And in the end, City Council is who decides all these things. So that has worked. Then we had to be patient. Hartford came along, and they did the south side of the road, and they've done a good deal. They brought a little bit of a different touch from Milestone. So now we're down to the two, what we consider the two key remaining properties within the city. The one we're here to discuss today is the one that Jack and James are going to do a presentation, and that's again for you guys to decide and discover, but it's an integral step to the final one, which is the property that is around the Rampy Pond. And the property around the Rampy Pond, first of all, you can't just sell one piece or another. You have to sell it to a developer who will do the whole thing and handle the whole thing, but it also ideally needs to have, we wanted a market street, we, you know, we want medical buildings, we want walking areas. People don't, developers don't do that till you reach a certain critical mass. So what is important that we see, these guys have a plan, they are qualified, they're financially strong, and it's better for them to develop the whole piece rather than just come in and just buy a pad site or pad sites and so on. That way, they control how it goes. The city also is comfortable how it goes, because it can overview the overall master plan of what they do. And what's integral for us of that is when, once, it's going to take three or four years, but once they're on the ground and running, it'll give the city the critical mass to bring in, whether it's these same guys or different developers, but to bring in top-notch developers who will have the best land planners, who will have the best designers, and who will basically manage what is the most important to us, which is the property around the Rampy Pond. So I'm here today to, if any questions come up, but really, it's their show, and I just wanted to, but I did want to introduce them under the context of how we've worked with the city on this for over 20 years. Thank you.
And for clarification, Rampy Pond is the large part, piece of water behind Kroger?
Yes, it's 50, that's a 109 acres. And it has frontage on the road and frontage around the Rampy Lake. And that pond is a critical for the drainage. I won't digress too far, but when Kroger was coming in, the city engineers at the time decided to ignore, we had had a central drainage plan approved by both the city and the county. And that plan, it essentially said that the Kroger tract and the tracks we're talking about had specific drainage requirements, but you could avoid detention. And Kroger deal was about to fall through until we came back to the city and said, look, you signed the drainage plan that said no detention was required, the county signed off on it, it was well-engineered. The problem for us was we then wanted to remind the city that this tract, that these guys are buying, was part of that drainage plan. And it's not you guys, but the city basically ignored its obligations and did not do the drainage through the Kroger tract, as I would call it, as they should have done. So now we have to come to Plan B, which is find another way to do the drainage. Otherwise, 30% of what they're buying is useless. And so what we have to lockstep with them is, when they come up with a plan, we have to be willing, to a degree, we're not obligated, but we have to be willing to try to incorporate their drainage into the drainage around the Rampy Pond. So anyway, I'm here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, go ahead, Mr. Todd.
Sarah, Cheryl, Stan, thanks for having us. I'm James Todd, I'm from BCS Capital. We're a mixed-use retail and industrial developer out of Houston, focusing primarily on the eastern USA, but have projects all around Texas. Right now, we're currently looking at this site in Montgomery to be a mixed-use residential and commercial development. We currently have one of these similar to this in the city of Magnolia right now, off 149 and 1488. If you turn to the back of this presentation, you can see page 15 here. The way we see this Montgomery track is something very similar to this, where you have a mix of these junior anchor retailers and then our full-service restaurants mixed in with residential, exactly like this. So that's what we're focusing on now as a company. And then this site specifically, we're currently looking at different site plans. If you see page two right now, we've got a layout of juniors in the back, including Academy and people like TJ Maxx, Ross, Home Goods, with a little bit of retail mixed in on that east end. And then on the front edge, you have your quick-service restaurants and full-service restaurants that we're currently exploring. On page three, you'll see kind of a zoomed-in version of one of the concepts that we're looking at, as well as a full site plan of the entire 32 acres. So looking at this, we've got the optionality, you know, we're looking at seeing if we can do a hotel, we've been reviewing those studies right now, car wash. But as the track lies today, it is primarily zoned commercial. So one of the things we're exploring right now is looking at changing the zoning of the northern portion of that land to accommodate more of the mixed use that Philip has referred to, that was previously in the plans of the city of Montgomery, where they looked at all of that extensive land planning. Some of those examples of these multifamily projects can be seen on page nine and 10. We're trying to build, well, we would not be building, but we would be partnering with some of the more quality multifamily developers in the Texas market. And you can see that these would be three-story, fully amenitized projects, a little bit higher class than what has previously been built in the city of Montgomery today. With all of that being said, the bright side of this is these tenants and then this multifamily project will generate a significant amount of sales tax and property tax for the city of Montgomery. I have on page five, if you turn to that, some rough projections over a 15-year period to just to show the magnitude of what a mixed-use development like this brings to kind of a tertiary market like Montgomery. So stabilized figures for just property tax alone and total value of what we'd be creating on the ground, it's roughly $90 million in value at full stabilization. What that means on the sales side is that it would be roughly, conservatively, in a fully stabilized year, $66 million in total sales, depending on what the city of Montgomery takes away. That's a huge needle mover in what y'all are able to do economically. All that being said, there are some of the challenges that we have to face that Philip referred to earlier with draining to Rampy Lake, and there's a significant amount of infrastructure that we're going to have to put in to accommodate these tenants and the multifamily projects on the northern portion of the track. We're currently exploring what all of that's going to cost, and we're working through that today, and as we work with these tenants and see who's interested in running all of our studies, and we're looking forward to reviewing the feasibility report that the city is currently preparing, and we're super excited about this. Y'all have any questions?
Well, I'd like more clarification about the drainage, because Mr. LaFer said that 30% of the property was useless to you unless we did something with the drainage. Is it because the land is too low, or the infrastructure wasn't developed properly? What caused that to come to pass?
So when we, when we had a central drainage plan that incorporated, there are two plans actually, but it incorporated ransoms and 30 acres and the 110 behind Kroger, including Kroger. So as Philip mentioned earlier, that was what enabled Kroger to go forward with their development without having to dedicate the five acres that they were going to for retention Along the way, when Kroger submitted their plans to the previous city engineering, and Jack...
Gates.
Gates was city administrator, we reminded them throughout the process that the central drainage plan had to take drainage from the west, and it would go east through Kroger. But during approval of those plans, which we don't approve engineering plans, the city does, they did not allocate enough space, so the storm sewer going through Kroger does not accommodate anything to the west or to the northwest. So we essentially got cut off. That property gets cut off from the overall drainage plan, rendering that, I won't say obsolete, but it doesn't work anymore, because Kroger doesn't have the capacity to take the drainage that it was supposed to take from the west and bring it through to the creek and the bridge area there. So that now, that 30 acres and that is part of this discussion with Jack and James and those guys, has been, you know, it's a standalone piece. It has to have, there is, for all of that property now, there's got to be detention. You have to incorporate drainage, but you know, unfortunately, the people that made those decisions aren't here anymore. But we're left holding the bag, and BCS is left holding the bag to incorporate now onsite detention and take that drainage that should have gone east.
Okay. So there's going to be an extra engineering...
You've got to do something.
There are ways, you can be creative, and there are ways you can do it, and there are potentially ways the pond could be involved, but you know, what we're, from our standpoint and our discussions with them early on, was 30 acres is a standalone, because down the road, we don't want to be in the same situation with the city, that we all today, sitting here, have agreed a drainage plan, and we're all fat and happy, and BCS does their development, and we're all happy, and then we go to do the 110, and rules have changed, personnel has changed, everyone says, we don't remember anything about that, sorry, you're on your own, and now we've again lost value, you know, we lost value on the 30 acres. What they're purchasing it for is a different price than it would be had that central drainage plan been followed. And so we don't, we're nervous of doing something with the pond, and then down the road, losing value on the 110, because we run into this again.
How many acres is the Rampy Pond?
Approximately 15. I mean, and you know, when you do that, there are going to be things, you dig out more, you do, you know, whatever, but none of us today know what that land plan actually looks like. And that's kind of the overall goal that we did the land plan 15, almost 20 years ago, was that it was really bubbles that you can pick up and move around, because we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what today is going to look like, and even the land planning the city's doing for the different properties, BCS brings in a great plan, and they have hotels, and it's not exactly what, you know, you thought it would be, but it works for the city, and it's a, it complements everything. Obviously, we all want that to happen. It's not something that, you know, we want to stand by a land plan that was done 20 years ago, that, you know, if you can make it better, we all want to make it better.
Thank you. So I think that one direction I'm seeing, so if we make a correction for the 32-acre plot, what are we going to do about the other 140 acres, 104 acres? Because I don't, I don't want to get in the same situation where we did a development for Kroger, and we didn't follow the plan, and then now we're going to do something different for the 32 acres. So are we going to be able to, when the other 102 acres comes to pass, are we still going to have this drainage issue? Or is there any way to try to cope with the drainage issue for both properties? I'm just trying to think. I know it's kind of far down the road, but...
My name's Leslie with L Squared Engineering, so I'm helping out Jack and James on the 32 acres, but we're actually working on updating a drainage model with conveying the 32-acre flow, seeing what we can do, and also accounting for the 110 acres as well, so that that won't be an issue, is our goal moving forward.
Is this the highest part of all of Buffalo Springs? The elevation, this piece?
The 110 acres is...
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Sorry, I should have asked you to come...
The road frontage of the 110 acres on the loop is the highest point. Of the 110, about 94 acres drain into that one catchment area, into the pond.
Into the pond.
So everything in the 110, except for about five or six or seven or eight acres on the corner of Buffalo Springs Drive and the loop, that drains through, and when we did our subdivision, I believe they took a lot of that drainage into consideration there. So the drainage right now that is important, because we aren't going to sell, they aren't going to buy, I mean, all those things are the loose ends, but the important thing is to, is to come up with the final solution that incorporates now, that corrects what happened during the Kroger period, and moves us forward, and hopefully is recorded better by the city, so they, no disrespect, so they remember what they agreed to. So that's essentially what's going on here. I think that it can't be piecemeal. I think you have to have, you have to look at the 32 acres or whatever as one, and it has to stand alone if it has to, but if the 110 can help rectify the problems that were caused, but not hurt the 110, to me, the 110 is four, five years away. So I'm not, you know, we just need to make sure that, and that's why, as we've been involved, and that's why essentially we're working with them, and if the overall picture works long-term, and if it works for us, and it works for the city, and it's in the overall picture, I believe that these two tracks will become kind of an attraction to people. I mean, it's easy to build houses. I mean, everywhere you look, there are thousands of lots going in and houses going in. What the city, to me, needs to be philosophically, is the place, everyone says they come from Montgomery, even if they don't come from Montgomery. If they want to do something, they come to the city, they don't go elsewhere. So what we do on this track, or they do, and what is subsequently done on the 110, those to me should become ultimately the magnet that makes the city cohesive and makes it a place where people want to come, because they can do, it's convenient, they don't have to get in traffic jams, they don't have to commute, you know, we, you know, and again, I can throw out lots of ideas for the 110, but we'd love the market street. No market street unless people are coming shopping, we'd love some of these other things. You don't always get what you want, but you at least do the building blocks so that that is possible at a future day.
Thank you.
So how soon do you need to know whether or not we can, want to approve a zoning change of that property?
Specifically to the zoning change of, to multifamily on the northern portion, that would be crucial to us, being able to pull off the front edge of this track. Without that, then we're left with too much land with not an attractive use at the price per square foot that we would need. So it's very important to the overall development of the 32 acres.
So on this map, the subject property is in two different colors. There's a green, and then there's like a, we'll just call it yellow, it's not really what the color that comes to mind, but that's what we're going to go with. And so what's the differentiation? What's the green versus the yellow? Because it looks like, I don't know if there's two different zones or two different pieces that will have to act differently, and if I think, I hear you correctly, that green part's going to be the multifamily?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, great, well, yes. But what does that mean to us? Like, that means it's under the plan development directives and...
Well, as you know, that development, part of the difference is the plan development has expired.
Yes.
But at the same time, a lot of these actions, where these roads go, where they're placed, were based on the city agreeing tentatively to our land plan. So if you overlay the plan we've showed you, it's always been mixed use. So where it says subject tract, the city already had as commercial. The green above would, in our plan there, is already approved under the plan development as being mixed use. So everyone talks about a change of the zoning, but in reality, most of the stuff along the loop, everything else, if you look at the land plan that we've provided you, which the city did agree to, the, you're not really changing the zoning, you're just sticking to what the city agreed to when we had the PD. The fact that the PD has expired doesn't change the deals that were done during the PD, if that makes sense.
Say that one more time, sorry, I coughed.
No, we had a PD.
Yes.
The city basically approved conceptually how the PD would work. Subsequent to that, our involvement in the PD is making sure people don't do something that's, I mean, there was one developer who tried to do something crazy, and we shut them down, because it was, they were going to put warehouses where warehouses shouldn't go. And so we, our only benefit on the PD was the ability to kind of oversee the zoning and make sure people did what was in the overall picture. So if you, if you were to look at the green, most of it's been developed. What's left is frontage along Lone Star Parkway, what's left is frontage along Buffalo Springs, and if you look at the plan that we provide the city and the city agreed to previously, that all technically is mixed use, or was accepted as mixed use. Now, whether that is something you have to change, or whether, I don't know how, with the PD expiring, whether that suddenly said, oh, all these roads are no good, and, you know, or whether it was, that's the plan that was agreed to, and that's what the city will continue to allow... and that's what the city will continue to allow to be followed. So that's something only you guys can choose.
But if you look at what the city's working on now, this green, this green area at the top, just for discussion purposes, to keep it for today, BCS, what we're talking about, that triangle, realistically, that's going to be commercial or mixed use anyway. No one's building houses there. No one's doing anything different. You look to the east of that, that's the new church. So again, we're not changing, we're not putting uses next to each other that aren't compatible or logical in any way. And if you were to talk to KG, what's the land planners that are working?
KKC?
Yes. They have similar mixed use, their concepts and the ordinances that they're working on for the city now incorporate kind of mixed use and residential above retail and different, like you live where you work and everything all kind of blends together. So none of this and none of what BCS, I think, is proposing is different or really contrary to what generally we have all been working towards and the city consultants have been changing or updating your ordinances to reflect.
Okay.
So it's for BCS, what's important for them is this triangle. The rest of it, we can talk, I mean, and if you go, if you look to the northwest of the triangle, roughly it's a 6.8-acre property that's already zoned, it's planned and commercial already. So you have different things that don't necessarily matter for today's topic, but what BCS is talking about really still lines up with what the city has been talking about generally. They just need a concrete answer from the city in terms of yay, nay, so that they can move forward and make their decision one way or another.
You are talking about that this is the church area, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there, this is a church, yeah.
This is, so the church, the church, actually, this is the church right here and they have the same discussion with the city. And I'm supposed to be in mic just in front of the microphone?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
If you're looking, if you're looking at the church property, it is, if you see where it says subject tract on the green and yellow that you're looking at, to the northwest, there is a piece that's kind of a, I don't even know how to describe it, but it is green and yellow and that is the church property. So the church had the same discussion with the city and went through similar discussions about their zoning because they had this, once the PD expired, that same issue applied to them. And if you look at the overall master plan, that was originally going to be assisted living in a hospital, so the church isn't actually too far off from that type of use.
Assisted living?
Well, you know.
Assisted living in churches, that might be the only sentence I've ever heard, both of those were said as parallel. What I will say in favor of this is when Home Depot approached us and all of these other big bucks out east, we did want to have a buffer between our downtown, which under this new administration, we are putting back as a focal point and continuing back where we were in 2020 with the downtown plan. So to update our downtown, to make this a desire, because that really, yes, there's going to be an automatic heartbeat where y'all are here, but truly, it's half a mile down the road and that's really where the, I'll call it the crown jewel is. And that's where we really want that walkability space because all the retail, I mean, I'm sorry, all the homes, residential's here. And truly, you could take a golf cart and come over here and then hit our historic downtown. And it does make nice for that work, play, live vision that we've talked about before with KKC. So it's not far off, but I do know that council's also, and we've talked about this, about multifamily. There's a little, there's going to be some, probably more discussions about what that looks like. And definitely want to, drainage is, I think, anywhere, it's a hot topic, but definitely today, in today's world and in us, it's a hot topic. And so what, I don't think this council would have the desire to make you go neck-deep into drainage, but also at the same time, we want to make sure that you're taken care of as well as the neighboring properties and it's done right and correctly. Done well, whatever the word is, but I think we understand. So, okay. So you don't yet have 100% anchor, or you haven't purchased it yet, an anchor store yet? Are you close or have an idea? Sorry, James, I should have asked you.
You're good. As of right now, Academy is super interested in this week as a pretty big deal in the retail world. There's ICSC up in Dallas, so there'll be discussions there with them later this week. As for the other, I guess, smaller anchors, no, not at this moment, but Academy is super serious about it and starting to talk about the economics of the deal.
Okay.
I was going to ask you about the hotel. Kind of go into that, what your thoughts are about the hotel.
Currently, right now, that's all conceptual.
It's not Motel 6 or anything, is it?
It would not, it would not be Motel 6. I'm trying to think of...
Just a question?
Quality parallels, like something like a Hampton Inn or that level of quality.
Home Suites?
Home Suites would probably be a touch below, but I don't want to get tied to one thing. This is all conceptual, so it's...
And I believe KKC on their map have a hotel on Rampey Pond, okay. Conceptually.
So the conceptual idea that I have is this part of the 32-acre tract we want to keep commercial and the most northern part is going to be the residential, right?
Yes, exactly. So at a minimum, it would probably need to be 14 acres of multifamily to the north, but it'll probably end up just being, just based on the depths, going closer to 17. Somewhere in that 14 to 17-acre range.
And if I heard you correctly, y'all are willing to, if necessary, put in a detention pond and have that work as a feature for...
Everything at that front is a function of cost depending on how much land we lose versus how much that infrastructure costs compared to, you know. There's a world where maybe putting three acres of detention is actually more cost-effective than draining under Buffalo Springs. But at this point, we have no clue on cost, so what we'll have to keep evaluating. There is a world where we still would develop this track with a little bit of detention, but it becomes probably increasingly harder if I had to guess.
So the discussion today is just to get the temperature, if we are interested in moving forward, if we like the idea, how about that? We're not voting on anything, of course, but just like the idea, would like to hear more.
More of a, we want to get familiar with y'all and work together. We don't want to put a band-aid on a situation with the drainage and potentially bastardize another track for another. That doesn't do anything for anyone. Those tracks' success will, then, those people will shop at our retail. So it's all about synergy. And then the other part of that is making sure that y'all are aware that if we are to do this overall development, that multifamily will have to be a portion of it. We're not saying that we're going to build anything similar to what you've seen and disapproved of recently. And this will be a higher-quality multifamily project that, you know, that complements our retail well.
Y'all have any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up, council inquiry. All right, with that, I will enter, I'm sorry, did you have something, Stan? Go. Are you sure?
Well, I mean, you know, so far, I mean, they need kind of an indication. I don't have any problems with it.
Okay. It sounds like it's going to be a great project.
Yep.
Just, you know, make sure that it's sort of what Philip envisions anyway.
Is this LaFev Plaza?
No.
Okay, all right.
Holly Hills.
Oh my gosh. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and it is 2:39. We will adjourn this meeting.